The order, this is a planning commission meeting on July 23rd, 2020 at 6:30. And before we begin here, I want to go ahead and read some opening remarks here. I'd like to state for the record that this is meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public emergency, city halls closed the public. Agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestream online and then on on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be assessed by going on to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and then navigating to the Planning Commission page. Once there, you'll see a link entitled submitted online speaker card. The public also has the option of participating tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in feature was provided on the posted agenda, and there's a link on the Planning Commission agenda as well. So that said, at this point, we, can we have a roll call, Charlie?
Certainly. Commissioner Chafe?
Present.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Mendez?
Here.
Commissioner Sohani?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Here.
And Chair Guerrero?
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Thanks, Charlie. We have a rather short agenda today, but some really fun, exciting things happening. And so we'll move on to Commission Matters, item 3.1 on the agenda, which is our swearing in of our new Commissioner Zoe Chafe.
Welcome, Commissioner Chafe. Typically, I would have you stand, but since we're kind of tied to our computers, we can do it seated, but I'd like you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Zoe Chafe.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
As a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
As a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Commission.
Cowboys like they have at the baseball games.
Welcome, Commissioner Chafe. It's great to have you on board with us, and I'm looking forward to working with you. If you have anything that you'd like to say to the Commission, you're welcome to say anything at this point.
Thank you, I'm really pleased to be on the Commission and really looking forward to meeting eventually and working with all of you. I think it's a really exciting time for Emeryville. We have so much potential in the city and a lot of exciting projects, a lot of exciting changes, and I don't take this responsibility lightly. So thanks very much for inviting me in.
Welcome. All right, are there any Commissioners I'd like to address our new Commissioner at this point? Anything that you'd like to say?
I'll just say welcome, Zoe.
Just so welcome, glad to have you.
Good to hear, good to see you here, Zoe, good, real nice to see you around, thanks.
I'm here, Zoe, welcome, and looking forward to meeting you in person one day. Thank you all.
All right, all right, so we'll continue on. We have the item 3.2, which is our recognition of an outgoing Commissioner, and this is Commissioner Gail Donaldson. Charlie?
Okay, do you'd like me to take this?
Yes, can you share the resolution that we created for Commissioner Donaldson?
I certainly will, and I hope you can hear me okay. My internet connection seems to be a little spotty. This is a Planning Commission Resolution Number GD 20-01, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, expressing the Commission's sincere appreciation to Gail Donaldson for over 14 years of service on the Emeryville Planning Commission. And I want to say that this was a group effort. All of you contributed portions of this resolution, and I will read it now. Whereas, on January 17th, 2006, the City Council appointed Gail Donaldson to the Emeryville Planning Commission to fill the unexpected vacancy due to the resignation of the Gazella Chris Owens, whose term was due to expire on June 30th, 2008. Council subsequently reappointed Gail to the Commission for three-year terms on July 15th, 2008, July 19th, 2011, June 3rd, 2014, and June 20th, 2017. And whereas Gail's final term expired on June 30th, 2020 for a total tenure on the Commission of 14 years, five months, and 13 days. And whereas Gail served as Vice Chair of the Commission from August 2006 to July 2008, having been re-elected in July 2007, and as Chair of the Commission three times, from July 2008 to July 2009, from July 2011 to August 2012, and from July 2017 to August 2018. And whereas from August 2006 until its last meeting in November of 2012, Gail represented the Planning Commission on the General Plan and Zoning Update Steering Committee, playing a critical role in the extensive deliberations on and eventual adoption of a new general plan and new planning regulations. And whereas Gail represented the Planning Commission on the Ad-Hoc Committee that developed the Parks and Recreation Plan, which was adopted by the City Council. Whereas, represented the Commission on the Parks and Recreation Committee till June of 2020, when the City Council reappointed her to the committee as a community representative. And whereas during Gail's tenure on the Commission, a number of major development projects were approved by the Commission or City Council, and a number of long-range planning efforts were recommended for approval by the Commission and adopted by the City Council, both too numerous to list by name, and Gail played an active role in the deliberations on all of these projects. And whereas, both in both her professional career as a land architect and in her passion for quality of life issues generally and for parks and open space design specifically, which has served the Commission well during her long tenure in public service. And whereas Gail's deep and wide knowledge of Emeryville codes and regulations and expertise in the field of landscape architecture will be sorely missed. And whereas her willingness to provide carpooling solutions for a planning commissioner who often needed a ride home when meetings ran late was always greatly appreciated. And where I'm sure some of you know what that's talking about. And whereas Gail's dedication to walking all project sites and attention to detail demonstrated an inspiring level of commitment to public service. And whereas Gail's infinite knowledge of landscape design and flora assisted her fellow commissioners and ultimately the City of Emeryville as a whole in guiding the development of Public Parks, POPOS, which stands for Privately Owned Public Open Space, and all manner of landscaped open space while carrying that same passion to a greater extent to building design and finishes. And all of these items affected not only the finished project, but improved benefited and enhanced our city as a whole. This, along with her concern and caring for the outcomes for families and the children of Emeryville, made Gail a well-rounded and compassionate Commissioner and person. And whereas Gail's thoughtful and humane approach towards design and planning and her insightful input on multiple complete street, mixed-use development and landscape projects made her an incredibly valuable asset in defining the future of Emeryville. And whereas it is the citizens of Emeryville that will miss her equally as much as the Planning Commission, and with all that she has outlined for the city, hopefully make this part of the world a universal cohabitation. And whereas she has carried the torch well, Gail Donaldson reminds me of a quote from Edward T. McMan, quote, "Growth is inevitable and desirable, but destruction of community character is not." The question is not whether your part of the world is going to change, the question is how. And whereas Gail brings her valuable and extensive knowledge about planning and especially open space design to all discussions in which she is involved, is skilled at finding proactive ways to move ideas and discussions forward, and is above all a friendly collaborative colleague who clearly cares about the Emeryville community and its future. And whereas Gail's thoughtful and insightful comments and wisdom on a variety of long-range and current planning issues will be greatly missed on the Planning Commission, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Gail Donaldson for over 14 years of outstanding service to the City of Emeryville and its citizens, and wishes her the best of luck in all of her future endeavors, approved by the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on Thursday, July 23rd, 2020. And at this point, I would like to present Gail with a framed copy of this resolution that she can display proudly.
There, you can read the whole thing. So much, that was really, this is overwhelming. Wow, it's two pages long. Thank you all for your kind words, it's really much appreciated. I got involved in the Planning Commission early in the 2000s when there was still a train running down Doyle Street and along where the Greenway is now, and there was a warehouse across the street from me where the Doyle Hollis Park is now. And the warehouse was going to go out of business or was moving, and the city bought the land and was concerned about, as they are now, parking in Emeryville, and decided that the best thing for that site was a big parking structure. And a bunch of us in the neighborhood got together and we formed the Doyle Street Neighbors. We advocated, we went to Planning Commission meetings and City Council meetings and said, no, we don't need a big parking structure right here, we need a park. And, you know, fast forward, we have a really lovely, well-used park there now. And basically, I was hooked. I thought this is a really good thing to be able to do, to influence the way the city is growing, what the spaces are used for and all that. So, like I said at the last meeting, it's been a really rewarding and sometimes challenging 14-plus years. There's been a huge amount of change in the city. And I'm just really grateful to have had, served with a real, a number of very dedicated, smart, and thoughtful people who really care about the quality of life in Emeryville. We didn't always agree, but we always had the best interest of the city in mind, whichever, however we conceived that. So I'm going to miss the participation at the Planning Commission level, but I'm going to be around, I'm not going anywhere, still do the Park and Rec Committee. And I hope we can all keep taking actions that keep Emeryville moving forward as an equitable, diverse, sustainable place that prioritizes its public spaces and its quality of life and is a place that we want to continue to live for a good, long time. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. You summed it up so nicely, you're leaving a legacy here. And to say that we have big shoes to fill is an understatement, right? And so I'm really looking forward to hearing more from you as a resident and continuing that relationship. And I'm really excited for you to enjoy retirement. It's well-deserved, and just by looking around, I can see the change that you've created here. And so I really admire the work that you've done along the years and look forward to see how you're enjoying retirement over the years. So congratulations, and I'm going to miss you.
Well, I'm not going to be that far. Thank you so much.
I'll open up the floor for any Commissioners I would like to address, Commissioner Donaldson.
Can always.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something. I was not as fortunate as some of the other planning commissioners to serve on the Planning Commission as long with you, side by side. I wish I did serve with you a little bit longer because I've heard so many great things about you, and not only from people on the Planning Commission, but also employees in the city and residents that have said so many great things about you. And I just wanted to give you a warning that I might be reaching out to you to kind of connect and just get a little bit of tips and tricks from you. So I'm really looking forward to connecting with you as a resident.
I look forward to staying in touch with all of you, and thank you, Erica. I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to meet more closely as well. But we will.
So I'd just like to say, I won't know what a Commission is like without you. You've been here ever since I've been here, in my third term. And so you are kind of the grand dom of the Commission, and you've always had such great, diverse viewpoints of things. You help steer me in the right directions many times. So your wisdom and your hard work is going to be missed, and I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again, and it has been a pleasure.
Good serving with you, too. Got a good group there, going to keep the city on the right track, I'm sure.
All right. If there are no further comments for Commissioner Donaldson, congratulations. And we'll see you on the other side, huh? All right, we're going to move on to item 3.3. This is our election of officers that happens every year. So at this point, we can, Charlie, when we do this, should we start with the nomination of the Chair or the Vice Chair?
You can do whatever you like. The Commission has done it different ways over the years. Sometimes somebody nominates both positions at once, and you vote on both, or you can do the Vice Chair first or the Chair first, however you like.
You got it. All right, well, I'd like to begin by nominating Vice Chair Thompson to be the Chair.
I'd second that. If there's no further motion.
Great, so we have a second from Commissioner Keller.
Okay.
And is there, we can move forward with the nomination for the Vice Chair unless there are other nominations for Chair from other Commissioners. All right, seen none? Do I have any nominations for the Vice Chair position? Commissioner Young, I think that you're on mute, but it looks like you're making a nomination there.
Need to unmute.
Unmute yourself, Commissioner Young?
You're muted.
You're on mute, Commissioner Young?
See, I was trying to be a, I was trying to be a good Zoom person to keep down the bandwidth. Wow, okay, I nominate myself for Vice Chair, someone wants to second.
All right, we have a nomination for Commissioner Young for Vice Chair, do we have a second?
I would second him.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have any further nominations for Vice Chair?
All right, do we vote?
All right, it sounds like these are non-contested, so we're going to vote and move forward with the vote. Charlie, can we have a roll call?
All right, all right, we have Commissioner Thompson for Chair and Commissioner Young for Vice Chair. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sohani?
Aye.
Commissioner Young? Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Guerrero?
Aye.
So congratulations to Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Young.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, so at this point, we have a new Chair. And so I'd like to pass the gavel to Commissioner Thompson now at this point, and congratulate Vice Chair Young. And I'm going to step back now and let you run the meeting, Commissioner Thompson.
I wondered if that was what was going to happen, so thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. No, thank you for serving yourself. You know, I look forward to trying to wrangle, you know, the meeting. I know it takes a little bit more work than being Vice Chair, and so I really appreciate the work that you've put in. And please excuse my messing up of people's names because the Commissioner Young, Commissioner Mendez, that system of naming people, I'll have to get really practiced at. But let's keep moving with the agenda. So we've gone through the election of officers, and now we are on to nomination of the Representative to Parks and Recreation Committee. And I don't know, is there a preset nomination?
Can I make a few remarks, Chair Thompson?
Sure.
Okay, as you heard in the resolution for Commissioner Donaldson, she served as the Representative to the Parks and Recreation Committee from the Planning Commission for the entire life of that committee to date. The Parks and Recreation Committee has a designated position on it as for a Representative from the Planning Commission. Needless to say, Commissioner Donaldson can no longer be in that role since she's no longer on the Commission. However, as was noted, she was reappointed to the Committee by the City Council as a resident, so she is still on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I would like to also note that Commissioner Chafe is a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. So you could nominate her to be your Representative to the Committee, which would then free up a position on the Committee for a resident to be appointed. Alternatively, you could nominate another Commissioner to be your Representative on the Committee, which would then have, you effectively would have two people at the Committee, one who is your official Representative and the other who was on the Commission and a resident Representative. And that would then not open up a new seat on the Parks and Recreation Committee. So it's totally up to you as to how you would like to handle that.
Okay, I think the first question would be, Commissioner Chafe, are you interested in being on the Committee again as the Planning Board Representative? So thank you. My preference at this point would be to remain as a resident on the Committee, and I have a nomination that I'd like to make when appropriate. Okay. So I'd like to nominate Commissioner Guerrero. I would second that.
You. And I'm sorry, who was the second, Chair Thompson?
Yes.
All right, are there any other nominations? No, all right, are you ready for a roll call?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sohani?
Aye.
Commissioner Young? Oops, sorry, I'm still using the old list. Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
All right, seven eyes, congratulations, Commissioner Guerrero. You are now the official, well, I shouldn't say it. You are the nominee to be the Representative from the Planning Commission. It is the City Council who will ultimately make that appointment.
Thank you, Charlie. And thank you for the nomination, Commissioner Chafe.
Look forward to serving you with you, pending approval.
Likewise.
I have to say, I think it's unlikely that the City Council would not approve that.
Okay, well, at this point, I'd like to move on to public comment. And I believe, Charlie, this is things that are not on the agenda.
Right, oh, and you know, I don't know if you have the canned speech for that.
I don't.
You have it, Miguel, would you mind reading that?
You got it, I'll just pull it up here. All right, so now's the time for public comment. For this portion of the meeting, anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda should have begun submitting your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the City Clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine, and the clerk will call you at the appropriate time. At this time, I want to check in with our City Clerk and whether any comments have been received via online comment card or if anyone's raised their hand to make an audio comment.
I see no online comment cards nor any raised hands.
I think she's looking.
There you go.
I don't see any online comment cards or any raised hands at this time.
And I do not, I do not either.
Great, and I do want to make a note that at this point in the meeting, the study session that was scheduled for this evening has been canceled and postponed to another meeting in the future for September. And so if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of that item, right now is a good time for that as well.
Still no raised hands.
Okay.
And I'm supposed to get an email if anybody submits a speaker card, and I do not have any such email.
Great, we'll give it a few seconds here.
Okay. We only have two, three attendees, and they're all staff, so I doubt that they'll know.
I couldn't see that. All right, I think that we can move on then. So here are no additional requests to make comments. The public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. And we can move forward with the remainder of the agenda.
Okay, so I'll move forward with the approval of the action minutes of June 25th, 2020. And I don't know, Charlie, can you review the voting availability? Was there anyone absent last?
Good point, you know, Commissioner Sohani was absent at the June 25th meeting, so he would need to abstain.
Is anyone ready to nominate approval?
I'll nominate approval.
I second that.
All right, and I know the City Clerk likes us to take a roll call vote on this. So if you're ready, we can do that.
Can I ask one question before we do that? Will we still have quorum if I abstain as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because I wasn't present for the meeting.
That's right, of course, of course, yes. Let me see, I'll try to do it right this time. Okay, Commissioner Chafe has abstained, Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sohani is also abstained. Commissioner, wait a minute, am I missing somebody? Me?
Young, Thompson.
Vice Chair Young? Aye. And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
I didn't miss anybody, did I? No, okay, good, we have five eyes and two abstentions.
Fantastic. So the next item on the agenda is the Community Development Director's Report. Charlie, do you have some news for us?
Yes, I do, a little bit, thank you, Chair Thompson. First, with regard to recent City Council actions, the City Council has met twice since your last meeting, and that was on July 7th and July 21st. At the July 7th meeting, the Council adopted the Housing Affordability Table pursuant to At the July seventh meeting, the council adopted the Housing Affordability Table pursuant to the Affordable Housing Program. This table sets the maximum monthly rent or purchase price. For below market rate housing in Emeryville based on household size and income level. They adopt this table every year. And it's at the maximum that BMR, that can be charged for BMR units in Emeryville. The council unanimously approved the second reading of an ordinance amending the planning regulations to set bird safe building standards. Which was first read at the June sixteenth council meeting. As you may recall, the commission recommended approval of these amendments at your April twenty third meeting. And this ordinance will take effect thirty days after its second reading, which will be on August sixth. The council passed the second reading of a regular ordinance that had been introduced on June sixteenth to expedite the approval process and eliminate fees for outdoor dining or restaurants and bars. This ordinance waves or modifies certain provisions for the procedures for temporary use permits, sidewalk cafes and parklets. The ordinance will take effect on August sixth. And as I previously reported at the last meeting, the council also passed a companion urgency ordinance on June sixteenth, which took effect immediately. And under which we have already approved a number of applications for outdoor dining, which you may have seen around the city. And the council considered the scope of work for a new pedestrian and bicycle plan, which the commission had reviewed. And commented on at your last meeting on June twenty fifth. The council was informed of the commission's comments and they approved including them in the scope. The council also reiterated the need to include a review of the implementation of the current pedestrian and bicycle plan in the scope. On July twenty first, just day before yesterday, in the afternoon, prior to their regular meeting, the council held a special study session on policing policy and developed a priority list of action items for future council consideration. The council approved an exclusive right to negotiate at the regular meeting in the evening. They approved an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with EAH Housing. For a sixty-seven unit intergenerational affordable housing project on the former city recreation center site at forty-three hundred San Pablo Avenue. Which currently serves as a temporary emergency family shelter. The project would be affordable to extremely low income and low income households and would serve both seniors and former foster transition age youth. The design is for modular construction with a podium made from mass timber rather than concrete. And features an innovative stacked parking concept that can be converted to additional housing units in the future if parking is no longer needed. This project will be coming forward in the future for planning entitlements. The council approved guidelines for the city's below market rate residential program. And the council also approved three urgency ordinance, ordinances related to mitigating tenant protection ordinances to mitigate impacts from COVID nineteen. These three ordinances concerned, one, the temporary moratoria on residential evictions. Commercial evictions due to non-payment of rent and residential evictions by homeowners associations. The second one was requiring landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to residential tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency. And the third one required landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to commercial food establishments impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency. The council had previously passed similar ordinances, but they expired on June thirtieth based on the governor's executive order that they were based on. The governor's orders was since extended to September thirtieth. So these new ordinances would likewise end on September thirtieth, but unlike the previous ordinances, these are tied to the governor's order so that if the end date of the governor's order is subsequently extended. These ordinances will likewise be automatically extended without the need for any further action by the City Council. Finally, on July twenty first, the council considered putting a measure on the November ballot, ballot for the voters to decide whether to impose a tax. On transportation network companies or TNCs, that is to say Uber and Lyft. At a rate of fifty cents for private trips and twenty-five cents for pool trip. But after extensive deliberation, the council decided not to place the measure on the ballot because the amount of revenue that's anticipated to be generated by such a tax. Would not be sufficient to pay for the implementation of the measure. So it wouldn't make any money for this. Didn't, decided not to do it. And in other news, concerning the Pet Bike Plan's scope of work that you all reviewed at your last meeting. We issued an RFP based on that scope of work for a new pedestrian bicycle plan yesterday. Now to be called the Active Transportation Plan based on your suggestions. We sent that RFP to five consultants and proposals are due on September third. Also, another RFP for objective standards, on June fourth, we issued a request for proposals for development of objective standards. To be used in required ministerial approval of residential projects under SB thirty five and other state laws. That's similar to the process that we're going through for the RCD thirty-six hundred San Pablo Avenue project. We received four proposals by the due date of July tenth. And we selected one consultant for negotiation of contract, which will be presented to the City Council for approval in September. This effort is being funded by an SB two planning grant from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And then finally, I know there's been a lot of interest and. Questions about the ONI project. What is the status of that? So I'm going to tell you now what the status of that is. Yesterday, I sent a letter to the ONI group informing them that I have deemed their application to be withdrawn. Because they have fallen out of contract with the owner of the property and they no longer have the owner's permission to develop a project on that site. This determination is appealable to the Planning Commission within fifteen days. That is by Thursday, August sixth. So if it is appealed, then of course it will come to you for ultimate decision. But if no appeal is filed by August sixth, then my determination that this application is deemed withdrawn will be final. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's a perfect time just to ask Charlie, have we gone out to bid or appear, I think, for the Fortieth Street, the. Two-way cycle track and the bus lanes and that whole project from the bridge to the border.
We are considering applying for a grant from MTC to fund that. And what that would do is it would, if, if we were successful in getting that grant, it would fund the design of the project. For construction. And then after that was done, it would be, go out to bid for building it. So.
What's the grant deadline?
It's September. So we have this on the council agenda, I believe, for September first to approve the grant application.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving on the agenda, the disclosure of conflicts of interest and expertise communications. I can start to, just to note that I did meet with BMR Realty, the developers or the applicants for the. For the PUD. And I'm not going to get the name right because it was Chiron and Novartis and. May have an official name that's some combination of that right now.
Chair Thompson, if I may just interject.
Yep.
Commissioners really only need to disclose conflicts of interest and expertise communications regarding items that are on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
And.
Should I remember it for the day that it's on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
I would say that since the only item on tonight's agenda has been continued, it's probably a safe bet that no one has had any expertise communications.
Yep. Okay, so we can move forward on the agenda. As noted, the study session has been canceled for tonight, so we won't be undertaking that. And after that is planning commissioners' comments. Anyone, any, does any commissioner have a comment?
I do. I just want to, just looking at the new faces on the teams here with fellow commissioners. Welcome aboard. Welcome to be, you know, even back to DPAC, you know, he's kind of new to it as well, but. All you guys, glad, glad to see a really cool team pulled together. Really nice.
Can I just second that? Commissioner Kathy, welcome. And again, fair roll to Commissioner Donaldson and moving forward with fresh new faces and fresh new ideas.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Shap as well and Commissioner Mendez. You know, I, I think you have been here for two or three months, but I look forward to working with all of you. And thank you to Commissioner Donaldson for her excellent service over the last fourteen years.
Thank, thank you all again for the welcome. Really appreciate it and looking forward to it. Okay, and with that, it's a short meeting, so thank you everyone for being here. I'm going to officially adjourn the meeting at seven ten PM.